Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let my councilman, Wallace, in.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, of America, and to the Constitution of this country, and to all its citizens.
Good evening, everyone. So happy to see you on this morning. Tonight is our second of the year recognition of residents and community members who are active, doing good things in our community. So excited to have you here. We're gonna start, we're gonna go by the meeting, so Councilman Wallace will be first with his honoree. Yeah, what have you got there? Just in case, we have two exits to one of the front that you probably came through and the one in the back. If you have your cellphones on, you can put them on vibrate or silence. That would be helpful. And Councilman Wallace will be first with his honoree.
Thank you. My honoree is Maisha Sarah Stokely. Maisha Sarah Stokely was raised in a single-parent home in a majority of her childhood in the city of Mount Vernon in New York. And she's a product of Mount Vernon Public School System. She was an honor student in the eighth grade class in 2000, graduating in 2007. She earned this distinction while she was heavily involved in extracurricular activity and whereas Maisha Sarah Stokely attended the University of Miami, majoring in nursing. While she was particularly serving as the president of the Black Nurses Association, where she organized community service events in Miami. In order to raise money for various organizations she contributed to, Maisha held weekly bake sales in front of a school of nursing. And whereas, Maisha Sarah Stokely's love for baking was evident. She received tremendous feedback on her baking skills and began baking for her friends and University of Miami staff. Maisha's family attributed to her baking talent to her great-grandmother, Sarah Day. And whereas, Maisha Sarah Stokely earned a Bachelor's Degree in Science in Nursing in 2011 and returned to the city of Mount Vernon, where she continued to bake for her family and friends. That same year, she incorporated Cupcake Cutie and worked as a resident nurse at nights with the hope of serving, saving enough money to open up her own bakery. And whereas, with hard work, support from her mom and prayers, Maisha Sarah Stokely opened the doors for her bakery in her hometown of Mount Vernon, New York, on October 10th, 2015, naming it Cupcake Cutie Boutique. And whereas, Maisha Stokely, Maisha Sarah Stokely, celebrated the one-year anniversary of the grand opening by launching Black Girls Bake Inc., a nonprofit organization for minority women and girls designed to support their passion and their skill in the craft of baking. And whereas, Maisha consistently gives back by mentoring young bakers. She hosts cupcake decoration classes and she hosts gingerbread house parties during the Christmas season, teaching children how to build gingerbread houses. And whereas, Maisha Stokely in a labor of delivering registered nurse and at New York, registered nurse at New York Presbyterian Lawrence Hospital, working at nights and baking during the day. And she is an active member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority in Zeta Nu Omega Chapter. Maisha is actively involved in her sorority initiatives, which include awarding scholarships to high school graduates and participating in monthly food distribution. And whereas, Maisha Sarah Stokely developed self-care for health care at Lawrence Presbyterian Hospital, a program that focuses on promoting self-care for nurses so they are able to effectively care for patients. Maisha is also the leader of the Rising Stars Ministry at Greater Centennial Church, where she mentors teenage girls. And whereas, Maisha is currently enrolled in a Master's in Nursing program, pursuing her dream of becoming a family nurse practitioner with a focus in women's health. She will be in, she will be inducted into the National Nursing Honor Society, Sigma Theta Phi for Academy Excellence. She is expected to graduate in December 2019. Her ultimate goal is to earn a doctorate degree in nursing and now therefore be it resolved that the city of Mount Vernon, that the city council on behalf of citizens of Mount Vernon, honor Maisha Sarah Stokely for her multi-faceted approach to paying it forward in assisting those in her community, whether as an entrepreneur, as a volunteer, or as a mentor, or as a caregiver. Therefore, Maisha Sarah Stokely has presented this resolution from the city of Mount Vernon today.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you to City Councilwoman Andre Wallace and to the City Council of Mount Vernon for this award. When I'm listening to my bio, I'm like, that sounds like a lot. And it is a lot, but when you get recognized for things like this, you know, it keeps me going. Every day is not easy being a business owner and being in school and working full-time, but I love my city. My customers come in almost every day and say, "This shop is so cute, it should be in Manhattan." And I'm like, "No, it should be right here in the city of Mount Vernon, where I was raised. I went to Avery Davis Middle School. I graduated from Mount Vernon High School." And I felt like I wouldn't open up anywhere else. It's the perfect city, it's up and coming. And thank you for recognizing me today. I mean, this generation is, this is the heart of our city right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Councilwoman Wallace?
It gives me great pleasure to recognize this individual and share a little bit of his story. He is a man who is respected, trusted, and loved by his family and so my inner community. He has served Mount Vernon and beyond, both professionally and civically, and he has made a significant impact on the immigrant community across generations. Mr. Manuel Albuquerque was born in Riquen Bonaventure, Portugal, on November 15th, 1932. And tomorrow he's celebrating his birthday, so happy birthday. Once Manuel Albuquerque completed primary school and thanks to an uncle living in the United States, who financed his education, he attended Viseos Industrial School. And in 1957, at the age of 25, Manuel Albuquerque arrived in the United States on a student visa. He attended Interboro Institute in Manhattan until June of 1958. Manuel worked in exports for 26 years before partnering with his wife at Popular Agency in Mount Vernon, New York. In 1974, Manuel Albuquerque founded the Escola de Fonte do Henrique in Mount Vernon. In its first year, four teachers, four instructors, taught the Portuguese language to 80 registrants. Successfully, registrations for Portuguese language instruction increased to as many as 160 per year. In 1976, Manuel Albuquerque, along with Nerrantino Cunhage and Donny Chtrilla, Manuel Neves, Americo Mula, and Manuel Gera, founded and incorporated the Portuguese Civic Association of the State of New York, which's membership was comprised of all Portuguese-American community centers throughout the state of New York. And throughout the years, Mr. Albuquerque helped different positions on the boards of the Portuguese-American Club in Mount Vernon, the Portuguese-American Cultural Center of the Terry Towns, the Escola de Fonte do Henrique, the Portuguese Civic Association of the State of New York, and the American Foundation for the Charities of Portugal. And in 1989, the Portuguese Civic Association honored Manuel Albuquerque for the stowaway on him, the Man of New York. Manuel Albuquerque currently resides in Mount Vernon with his wife, Luvish, and is the proud father of Linda and Diana, and grandfather to Lauren Rose. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council on behalf of the citizens of Mount Vernon honors Manuel Albuquerque for several decades of leadership and service to the Portuguese-American community residing in the city of Mount Vernon and in the state of New York. And for this unwavering commitment to the city of Mount Vernon, shall we...
I'd like to thank Janice Stewart and the member of the City Council of Mount Vernon for selecting me to receive the distinguished citizenship award. Having resided in Mount Vernon for over 50 years, I feel very privileged to be Portuguese-American. I am proud of my accomplishments. My desire was to always assist the Portuguese people in my community and neighborhood, neighboring cities and towns. I was also, my honor, to keep aligned with the Portuguese tradition and language through the school which I founded in the Portuguese-American Club in Mount Vernon. Thank you to the city of Mount Vernon for that partnership throughout the years. I am very honored to be recognized in this special day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening to the community. So it really is my distinct honor to recognize Mr. Mel Campos for the contributions that he has made to our community of Mount Vernon, particularly with our young people. And I read, Melvin Campos is a product of the Boys and Girls Club. He first attended the Pathways for Youth Boys Club in the Bronx in 1968. In 1974, he attended the Kipps Bay Boys Club, also located in the Bronx. And whereas, Melvin Campos credits his club experience with teaching him the importance of responsibility, respect, winning, and most importantly, losing. It is no coincidence that Mel would dedicate much of his adult life to the Boys and Girls Club. And whereas, Melvin Campos's professional career with the Boys and Girls Club movement began when he was an associate executive director of the Crime Prevention Association Boys and Girls Club in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And whereas, Melvin Campos was appointed executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of Albany, where he helped increase the budget from $426,000 to $1.2 million. Melvin was also asked to lead the Variety Boys and Girls Club of Queens, which is one of the most diverse in the country. Under his leadership, membership increased by 30%. And whereas, Melvin Campos's impact as director in each of the Boys and Girls Club he has led has been so effective that the Boys and Girls Club of America asked him to join the national staff as a regional director serving more than 30 clubs in New York and New Jersey. And whereas, since February 2013, Melvin Campos has served as chief professional officer of the Boys and Girls Club in Mount Vernon, New York. Under his leadership, average daily attendance has increased from 80 to 105. The budget has increased from $550,000 to more than $700,000. And the board has added nine new members. And whereas, Melvin Campos has also developed new partnerships at the Mount Vernon Boys and Girls Club. This includes collaboration with community stakeholders and the implementation of several new programs, including the nationally-recognized STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math program. And whereas, Melvin Campos possesses the true spirit of a volunteer and is an instinctive organizer, holding leadership positions with the City Volunteer Corps, the Albany Service Corps, the New York National Guard Challenge Program, public-private ventures, and the 1996 Olympic Games in Atlanta. And whereas, Melvin Campos is a graduate of Manhattanville College. He's married to Barbara and has three children, Adam, Lauren, and Brian. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council on behalf of the citizens of Mount Vernon honors and truly is my honor to recognize Melvin Campos for his spirit of collaboration, distinguished service, dedication to various Boys and Girls Clubs in the country, and as a champion for youth in the city of Mount Vernon. Congratulations. So I have to say that somehow the letter that was sent to Mr. Campos didn't make it to him. So it was just now that I called him and I said, "Where are you?" And he said, "I'm at the club." And I said, "But you're supposed to be at the yard." And he says, "Why?" And I said, "You're being honored." And he rushed here. So thank you, Mel. So this, you know, it truly is special.
Thank you, Deidre. Thank you very much. The children of our city are very special, and we need everyone to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Councilwoman Veron?
Thank you, Madam President. My honoree for tonight is an alumni of this great council. My honoree tonight is honorable Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Roberto Uzo. Whereas Roberto Uzo was born and raised in Bronx, New York, where she lived with her mother Rose Marie, father Marco, and young sister Adelé. And after graduating from St. Catherine's Academy High School, Roberto Uzo attended Paris-Greedin Beauty School and worked as a hairstylist for over 35 years, owning her own salon in Delray Beach, Florida. And while in Florida, Roberto Uzo decided to complete her undergraduate degree. She returned to New York and enrolled in the College of New Rochelle, where she earned a Bachelor's of Science degree in Psychology, magna cum laude, at the age of 48. And whereas, in 1994, Roberto Uzo was appointed as Executive Director of Community Service Associates, a nonprofit agency fully located in Mount Vernon at Sacred Heart's Church's Social Center. Now located in the Mount Vernon Armory, CSA is a vital community organization which provides counseling, art class classes, and a soup kitchen which serves over 70,000 meals a year to anyone in need in Southern Westchester County. And whereas, Roberto Uzo is a member of several organizations such as the Mount Vernon Rotary Club, Food Patch Advisory Board, Council of Community Services, Executive Committee of the Westchester Coalition for the Hungry and Homeless, Advisory Board Member of Catholic Charities, YCOP Board of Directors, College of New Rochelle Alumni Board, and founder of the ABCs of Separation and Divorce Support Group, Mount Vernon, among several other organizations. And whereas, Roberto is a recipient of several awards, including the Outstanding Leadership Rotary Award, 1997 to 1998, Italian Civic Association, 2004, Rockland Psychiatric Center Community Service Award, 2006, Martin Luther King Legacy Award, 2006, Junior League of Bronxville Community Service Award, 2012, AARP Hudson 2619 Community Service Award, 2013, and Zonta Club's Women of the Year Award, 2013. Whereas, Roberto was elected to the Mount Vernon City Council in 2009 and served as a council president in 2012, 14, and 17. The duties of the city council president also required Roberto to serve as a member of the Board of Estimative Contract, as a member of the Capital Projects Board, and as vice-chair of the Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Agency. During her first year in the council, Roberto Uzo implemented the City Council Honoring Ceremony, which you are recognizing tonight. A ceremony held twice a year to recognize outstanding citizens and organizations that had made positive contributions to the city. And whereas, for eight years, Roberto Uzo was the host of a bi-weekly show with BURDA on the radio, or WBOS, a show that highlighted the accomplishments in the city of Mount Vernon. And whereas, Roberto has three beautiful children, Nicole, Dante, and Jared, and five grandchildren. She believes that her greatest joy is derived from her family and friends. And whereas, Roberto Uzo tries to live by one of Mother Teresa's models, "You never know what a simple smile can do." And now therefore be it resolved that the city council on behalf of the citizens of Mount Vernon recognizes Roberto Uzo for her tireless and diligent working to help the disenfranchised, for her commitment to the city, and for her service as a city council member for the great city of Mount Vernon. So I can definitely say that after reading the short biography of Roberto, her accomplishments, there's some of the things that I'm alive with with Roberto for the four years of people on the council together. There are a lot of things that are missing on here. Roberto is very accomplished and very caring for everybody in this community. So as her junior council member, we've been a lot of places together, a lot of boards together. Roberto pulled me in places that she thought I should be, and she's been very helpful to my role of being on the city council. So I know Roberto gets a lot of these awards, but she deserves all of them because she does a lot more than just being a tireless and dedicated council member. She does a lot for the community. So it's given me a great honor to present this to you, my friend, my co-council member.
Thank you so much. And to my fellow honorees, congratulations to you. And I guess when I look at and see this, this means I must be very old to have this. And being on the council, my hair was once dark brown. But this is what happened after eight years of being on the Mount Vernon City Council, which I loved every minute of it. People say, "What's it like to be retired?" But I am not retired. I plan on not being retired for a very long time. It's also very nice to be on this side of the fence, right here. And I hope someday maybe I will be able to return. Because I truly, truly enjoyed the eight years that I served this great community. And people don't really understand how hard a job it is. And when I think of what is going on right now, and I'm not on Facebook, I never have been, I never will be. I think it is totally unprofessional what is going on in the city with the hatred that is happening. I hope and pray that things will change because Mount Vernon is a very beautiful city with beautiful people, wonderful ideas, a place to grow your children and to be a part of. And I hope that more people are willing to come out and volunteer and do more things for what this council and past councils do for the city. It's not easy to be here, to be criticized and to have fingers pointed in your face that you're not doing a good job. But believe me, I know that for eight years, that the people that I served with and I served... and I served with mostly everybody here, that it's hard. And we work hard. You know, it's not just coming here. I had a colleague that is sitting out there that said, "Roberta, you know, maybe you should consider being on the council." He meet every other. Well, that was not true. Maybe it was years ago. But there are things to read, and there are places to go. There are people, as constituents, to see and hear from and learn from, and be out there and be in the community. I am very honored by this, which, because I just found out about it also. George, live TV. And the reason I kept saying, I said to Lauren, "When is the honoring ceremony? George, when is the honoring ceremony?" Because I started this many years ago and I just wanted to be here. Not for this at all. But I appreciate it and I thank the entire City Council. I appreciate you. Maybe I'll be back someday soon. Thank you so much. So certainly, last but not least, is me. So I am honored to honor you tonight, Jen Lacker, who is someone who does so many things I had no idea until a few months ago, but she's been doing over the last five, I think it's five years or so. But I'm gonna read her bio and then perhaps I'll say a little more after. Whereas Jen Lacker is an innovator, collaborator, entrepreneur, and volunteer whose aspiration is to promote equity, particularly in the criminal justice system. And whereas Jen Lacker has spent the last decade of her life working with populations involved in the justice system. She began assisting disadvantaged populations in North Carolina, where she was a founder and executive director of a nonprofit that provided mental health and substance abuse treatment services to the criminal justice population. During that time, she played an integral role in developing alternatives to incarceration for hundreds of justice-involved individuals who required behavioral health interventions to end recidivism. And whereas Jen Lacker worked with major partners to establish and procure funding for a mental health court, which is still in operation. Jen also trained law enforcement personnel, judges, and medical students on developing crisis diversion strategies to promote inmate rehabilitation and to also protect public safety. And whereas Jen Lacker returned to her home state of New York to continue her work with the justice-involved population. She is the founder and program manager for the Raise for the Entry, a five K walk-run ride designed to raise awareness and inspire collaboration and implement solutions around the needs of people negatively affected by incarceration. And whereas Jen Lacker is also the founder and lead organizer for the Reentry Meetup, an informal collaborative of change agents throughout New York City and Westchester County, who lead regularly to galvanize resources for individuals re-entering into the community. And whereas, most recently, Jen Lacker created Registered New York, a voter empowerment campaign designed to give voice to parole leads who have been granting the right to vote under Executive Order 181, as well as facilitating voter education sessions and absentee ballot casting on-site in the jail setting. And whereas Jen Lacker is the president of Station of Hope Prison Ministry, which is housed at Grace Baptist Church and has recently been appointed Chair of the Mount Vernon Reentry Council with the Westchester County Department of Correction. And whereas, in addition to her involvement in criminal justice reform initiatives, Jen Lacker serves as a fellow with the Interfaith Civic Leadership Academy with the Interfaith Center of New York. She is completing her second term as a member for the largest community board in the Bronx and is a member of the Bronx Democratic County Committee for the Eighty-Fifth District. I didn't know that, but I think right. And whereas in early years, Jen Lacker worked as an associate producer on a nationally syndicated NPR show and later started a sports and entertainment company, which included work during the Super Bowl, during the Super Bowl thirty, one, two, three, thirty-five. And whereas has been and working on co-branding projects with major Fortune One Hundred companies. And whereas Jen Lacker is a graduate of the University of Michigan with a Bachelor's degree in communications and a graduate of Cornell University with a Master's degree in labor and industrial relations. And now therefore may it resolve that the City Council, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Mount Vernon, honors Jen Lacker for being an energy agent and chief architect behind large-scale programs throughout the state of New York. Jen, come up. So let me tell you how me and Jen got formally introduced. So my mother said she needs self-help. So that's what happened. Anyway, congratulations. It's a good story.
I just want to say thank you. The work that I do in reentry is difficult work. It does not come with easy access and support. It's changing hearts and minds of people all over. And it impacts people of all denominations, all race, all cultures, all ages. And it's difficult work, but I am humbled by the council's acknowledgement of my work in support of the things that I have been trying to do
Stand this way. Look this way guys, look this way, one, two, three, one more.
We're going to start with our speakers, we've been waiting patiently to sign up. Again, congratulations to all the honorees. We're off to start the speakers. First speaker is. Thank you all so much for coming out all night before the snow hits. First speaker is Kamala Letta Ned. You can state, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have four minutes to speak, after three minutes. Oh, is he there? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Where is he on the list? No, Mr. Ned, you'll be next, stay right at the front. No, what's the name?
His name is John Kane.
Kane?
Kane.
Mr. John Kane, are you there? Um, Councilwoman Farquharson, I can't remember if this was the top one for Mr. Um.
Kane.
Kane, to speak.
Hi, I'm Chris, should I give these to you guys now or after?
After you finish. Just state your name and address for the record.
Alright, my name is John Kane, I live on the Catarroge Street at the Senate in Nathan. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you and address what I think is an issue that many townships and cities are at least beginning to tackle, which is the Columbus Day, the myth of Columbus, and what I wanted to make a case for, for dropping Columbus Day. So if you'll, if you'll help me out, I'd like to cover it, and if it's right with some of what your guests or your honorees have talked about, in terms of trying to get past some of the vitriol and the hate that's out there, so. I'll go ahead. Christopher Columbus did not discover America, correcting this myth, and really keep the quite outrageous statement, claiming otherwise, by now should need no explanation, but other would either. He was not a brave explorer nor a skilled navigator. He sailed in pursuit of wealth and riches, not out of some dashing explorer's spirit. He proposed this speculative voyage specifically for a payoff, for him and for Spain. And that point used to be missed by all the Italian-American fanatics. He didn't sail for Rome or Italy but for Spain. He was neither the pride of Italy, nor did he attempt in any way to secure a place in history for Italians or Italian-Americans. In fact, he would make one of his last voyages back to Spain in chains for his crimes and abusive behavior. He was neither recognized by, as a hero, by any of his contemporaries or the European countries he was associated with. He miscalculated the size of the Earth by almost half. The intent of his voyage failed, and he is judged that voyage by two oceans and a continent. In fact, he was closer to his intended destination before he set sail for Spain. He actually never reached any of the continental mainland, and certainly never set a foot on any land claimed by the United States, which further makes his celebration that much more absurd. His discovery began the transatlantic slave trade, which is among the most tragic periods of world's history. It resulted not only in the equally tragic American genocide, but the immediate massacre and exploitation of indigenous populations he encountered. His cruelty and heinous crimes against humanity are his true legacy. In the name of Spain and the Catholic Church, he claimed dominion over a land and a free people, and in doing so promoted rape, murder, mutilation, theft, and barbarism, which the other Christian nations of Europe would continue and add to. The voyage to Columbus added the next chapter to the doctrine of Christian discovery. This racist church doctrine, rejected by international law today, is still embedded in U.S. law, and was specifically cited recently, cited as recently as 2005 by Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She wrote in her notes, "Under the doctrine of discovery, feet titled to the land occupied by Indians when the colonists arrived became vested in the sovereign, first the discovering nation of Europe, and later the original states and the United States." The world still has failed to reckon with the crimes of Christopher Columbus, or his true legacy, and instead has spent the last century celebrating him. The question is, how can anything we learn from history, if we fail to honestly speak of it, or justly condemn the parts of it that warrant condemnation? Over half of all U.S. holidays involve romanticizing war and tragedy. Columbus Day is the most unnecessary and mischaracterized of all of them, and the life of Columbus represents the worst of mankind, and the ascent to which greed can produce pure evil. So as a native person deeply affected by the legacy of Christopher Columbus, I ask that you drop this false narrative, and the celebration of such a sadistic historical figure. Many states, townships, and cities have already replaced Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And while I would not be so presumptuous as to demand that you adopt the holiday for my people and our struggle, it is certainly an option that is sweeping your nation. Now, as I said, it may be presumptuous of me, of me, to come to your city and demand that you honor me and other indigenous peoples with a declared holiday, but it is perfectly reasonable for your residents and the people of your community and region to make such a demand. Every person of color, every immigrant, every person discriminated against for their beliefs, national origin, and background, as well as the indigenous people across Turtle Island, have all experienced the negative impacts of the superiority of white supremacy that sailed with Columbus, stayed long after his death, and remains today. Celebrating this historic figure and the false narrative associated with him perpetuates that. I mention the doctrine of Christian discovery because in spite of the overtly racist intentions, it remains as the foundation of federal Indian law, which is really law specifically about us, not for us. The U.N. Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People affirms that "all doctrines, policies, and practices based on or advocating superiority of peoples or individuals on the basis of national origin, or racial, religious, ethnic, or cultural differences are racist, scientifically false, legally invalid, morally condemnable, and socially unjust." I would argue that celebrating Christopher Columbus in the manner that has been done is a practice that advocates superiority and praises the methods used in advancing white supremacy. The narrative praised and advanced by this holiday is racist, scientifically false, legally invalid, morally condemnable, and socially unjust. A change in the name and the purpose of this holiday could seize on the U.N. Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, and raise awareness to the internationally declared minimum standard for survival, indignity, and well-being of indigenous peoples, all of them. A standard the U.S. still fails to meet. Thank you, I'm John Kane, and I host a show on WBAI, I am Mohawk, I live on the Catarroge Street at the Senate in Nathan, and again, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Um, Director Reed, I think I'm going to love this next. Veterans, Veterans Services Director Reed.
Good evening, my name is Kristen Breeze Van der Merwe, and I am the Director of the Mount Vernon Veterans Service Agency. Tonight I appear representing myself, the Veterans Service Agency, the veterans, and the Central Committee for Veterans Affairs, and I'll ask a big stand. Last council meeting, I addressed this body to discuss the harassing and interfering behavior from Comptroller Deborah Reynolds, and financed that towards the VSA in me and my role as the VSA Director. Since that meeting, nothing has changed. The Comptroller is subject to abide by the ordinance that has been passed by the Council for the Board of Directors. She has been holding my earnings since July 2018. She has currently been holding over $25,000 in New York State grant funding to the Veterans Service Agency, despite legislation Board of Directors encouraged and request to release the funding when it occurred in 2019. She is still refusing to pay the reimbursements for that. Her actions are impacting services to veterans and interfering with the official duties of the Director, and the Council has not intervened. The letters that the Council has received and commented on last meeting are not for information only, they are factual and require their immediate attention and interference. Attempts to reconcile any matters with the Comptroller have fallen flat because she denies any requests, is stuck in an echo chamber repeating the same erroneous information, refuses to confer with experienced staff, and denies conversations that have taken place in front of her staff and the general public. She does not put anything in writing on her letterhead or bearing her signature, or sent via her email account. There are vast enough of other things going on, from union and labor violations to misdemeanors and lawsuits, but I will let the other departments speak on that should they decide to. What I do, what I will do is state again for the record that she lies. Last meeting, Tom Keller, named members of the Democratic Party that are not elected officials, that I should contact to influence the Comptroller. A member of this body then endorsed that suggestion. The idea that unelected political influencers would be more effective than elected officials that have taken an oath to uphold the Mount Vernon Charter is cause for alarm and concern by all Mount Vernon constituents. I would like to know if each council member and the council as a body intends to do anything about this matter, and if not, why not? This evening I will also address an accusation made by Councilwoman Farquharson. Councilwoman, you falsely accused the VSA of not inviting council members to Sunday, that Sunday's Veterans Service Day observance. The Council was indeed invited, we had hand-delivered and hand-signed invitations on October 12th, literally a full thirty days prior to the ceremony. Additionally, Councilwoman Wallace, Councilwoman Duarte, and I had a conversation on Friday, November 9th, in the Rotunda, where I reminded them of this ceremony, and your colleagues have confirmed receiving the invitation. I am addressing your accusation publicly because you made it public via your Facebook posts, which read, "I, I was not informed about a Veterans Day event at City Hall. Have we reached a new low? Why wasn't the City Council invited to the Veterans Day event? The state representatives were invited. I say leave the veterans, the people, out of the dysfunction." Comments to your post included accusations against the mayor and your suggestions for a change in leadership. I take great offense personally that I would go to a new low and exclude elected officials from the ceremony observing veterans. I take great offense professionally and on behalf of the Central Committee for the Veterans Affairs, which helps coordinate these ceremonies, that we would do such a thing. More concerning is that after being provided proof of the timestamped invitation at last night's workroom, you have not removed or corrected the post, nor informed any of the commentators, that it was in no part due to the mayor, myself, or the Veterans Service Agency that you did not attend. As elected officials, your words carry weight, and your recklessness with words like corrupt, new low, and dysfunction will not be ignored by me. You quoted Michelle Obama. Mrs. Obama do not repeatedly make unsubstantiated and easily disproven claims without regard for how it affects people's livelihoods, my own and the administrative staff that accepted the invitations. I respect that you publicly can't affirm that the Council was purposely not invited by the VSA and the mayor, and that you present the facts as they are. Additionally, I request an apology for the accusation, which detracted from my morning over a person that I literally watched die of cancer on Sunday night, as well as ruining the one day off this weekend that I had to spend with my family. And I ask, what would have been to harm in awaiting a reply to your email rather than going low and posting it on social media? And I ask, why haven't you taken it down or corrected it since you were presented with the facts last night? And I must add that in regard to leaving the veterans out of the dysfunction, I remind you that I am a veteran, and I was dragged into this dysfunction. Without regard to, without regard to your dealings with other departments and/or colleagues, I demand that anything that concerns the VSA under my tenure be factual and accurate, as I have no interest in playing political games with anyone. I came into this position with my reputation and integrity intact, and I fully intend to leave that way by any means necessary. Thank you.
Kamala Letta Ned, thank you, Lord, for coming. Kamala Letta Ned?
Carmen Letta Ned, address forty, Anta Avenue. I'm here regarding. Regarding this.
What's your address, ma'am?
Four two zero AJ MC O D K, I'm here.
Yes, we can hear you.
If you need to, I'm sorry, if you need to have a conversation, please step outside because your voice carries up here, we can't hear the speaker. Thank you so much. Ms. Ned?
I'm here regarding bus issues at Fulton Avenue. I'm here with my neighbor, Mr. Hayes, who is back over here. I need to get some answers. We have not received any letters from City Hall. Normally we receive a letter from City Hall when something is coming to the neighborhood. I woke up one morning and saw some buses parked adjacent in my backyard. I woke up every morning at five o'clock to go to work. I'm a single man of four children. I work twelve-four shifts, seven days a week. I, I missed one hour this evening just to get here. This is my first time coming to all this meeting. So far, I like what I see, and I intend to keep on coming back until I get the result what I need, or what I want. Anyways, um. I spoke with, um, the gentleman who rented, um, the parking lot, the parking lot next door, and I asked him, I asked him, um, if he could get in touch with the landlord that renting the property. He said to me, um, he's going to contact the landlord. I went back over there and have, I have not got a reply. I called City Hall two weeks ago, and they told me that there is an investigation is going on. I'm here to get some answers, what's going on, um, what's, what is going on with those buses over there? What is, um, the investigation? When is gonna, um, when we're gonna get some answers, um, with the investigation? Um, before I take it any further, I intend to get a couple of my neighbors to write letters, I'm going to get it notarized, and bring it to the council, men and women, before I take it any further. I need some answers. Um, I could stay in my backyard, I have a picture, pictures right here to show. I could stay in my backyard and touch the fence where the buses, the buses, um, down, down, where the buses parked in my backyard. Exhaust, exhaust, exhaust from the bus, from, exhaust from the bus. My neighbor daughter has asthma, I have a heart problem. I cannot open, I'm sorry, I cannot, I cannot open my kitchen window. Every morning when I go to go to work, even to make a cup of tea, I'm not opening my window to breathe, I have to close the window. I cannot open my kitchen window because of safety on my head. And before I take it any further, I don't know if the owner of the building is there tonight, my concerns with you, sir, please do something about it, because my intention is, before I go do something about it, I come in to get some answers. My next step is to call the news media to admit I cannot get any answer on the result. Thank you all for listening, God bless you all. I have a picture here, if anyone wants to take a look at it, but this is.
Do you want to turn this down to the counter? Do you have that open?
No, it's okay, it's okay. But my intention is, please, I need you guys, I need some help. I love Mount Vernon, it's my community, I lived in Mount Vernon over thirty years, and I'm intent to leave Mount Vernon, I do my civic's duty, we're voting you guys, so we need some help. Thank you all for listening, God bless you all.
I didn't feel like you were.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Perfect. I've been a hairdresser in Mount Vernon for twenty years. I've been, I'm sorry, um, the business is forty-four West Thursday. My pocket. I've been a hairdresser for over twenty years, um, I've been self-employed eighteen of those years, and nine years ago I opened my first salon in Mount Vernon. It was 2010, it was the beginning of the financial crisis and the base run on the money, I did it all my own time. It was because of my financial struggle that when I first complained to my landlords about the gun range, the noise coming from the gun range downstairs, that they told me like they were having problems getting it open or whatever, and that they would keep the loud guns into the evening when I wasn't working and whatever. And it was a temper of the fix, was always with the promise of soundproofing only. I've been listening to these guns for the past four years. I've been complaining, I have different letters here. I would turn them into the council, they've been emailed around, um, to give them complaints. These are letters that I have written, the landlord at different times, I've tried several times to go to him, to correct the situation. In July, um, I had a client run out of my salon. In July, I had a client run out of my salon, and she ran out of my salon and into the gun, the gunshot, and when she ran to the gunshot, she was taken downstairs. Alright, alright, stop. She was taken downstairs and, um, shown the gun range, and then they offered her, um, a discount on shooting class, and she was appalled because she scared guns, and they didn't, you know, help her with the situation or whatever. I'm at my wit's end with them, I've contacted the City Council about this before, I want to thank Ms. Farquharson for being the only council member to come in. I've spoken with you, um, Ms. Copeland, um, but I don't know what to do at this point. Um, the police department has never come in and tested the noise from the gunshots in my salon, they have never come inside to test. And then also, you know, on the other side, looking for space at this point, because I am being pushed out of my space. My lease is up in May, and I'm being pushed out ahead of that. Alright, so I'm looking for space in Mount Vernon, in this area that I love, and, you know, you go, you have these landlords that tell you stuff like, $2,500 a month, and you're getting a $100 a month increase, then you have to pay the taxes on their building, and you cannot write any of this stuff off. And as a business, as a small business owner, it's, when do we get to reap the benefits of our money? We go to work every day. You know, I bring my daughter with me, she comes to the shop with me every single day. And at this point, I don't know what to do, I have invested everything I have in this salon, everything I have, and to just be pushed out the door, there are no laws in place that stop businesses, that stop building owners from treating businesses like this, and that's why there's this constant revolving door of businesses in Mount Vernon. I pay their taxes, I pay their water bill, I pay for heat, they have a central air unit on the, on the roof, it costs me $400 a month in the wintertime to heat my salon, alright? They do nothing. And when you talk about, you know, renting space in Mount Vernon, this is another issue going on in Mount Vernon, I've been looking at different buildings, I'm very far, there's a lot of tax shelters in Mount Vernon, buildings all up and down First Street that I would love to rent, alright? Because Grandington Avenue, they, they have lost their mind with the prices of rent over here. There's buildings all up and down First Street, they're kept in tropical conditions, and nobody, and, and their taxes are paid. When you call to find out who owns the building so you can rent, their taxes are paid, it's owned by somebody. But you see, there's no storefront, there's nothing in, and there's all of these buildings, you got the buildings down here on, on Fifth Avenue, that are of course from the parking lot here, I'm sorry, those buildings, they want you to put electricity and bathrooms in them, they don't have it. That is, that's a serious issue for small businesses in Mount Vernon, we can't continue to do this.
After everyone speaks, then the council will respond, so.
I will take her outside because she's not.
I get it, I get it. Jesse Van Loon?
Blessing Van Loon, four twenty-four South Ninth Avenue. Good evening, council members, Ms. Copeland. I'm here to talk about some doubts related to me today, which I understand. Which I understand the mayor was in court today for a grand jury, to find out that the funds from the Water Department was taken and used. All since I came to Save My Vernon, I have over twenty-five to thirty people contacting me last two weeks about what should they do with their water bills. I suggested them for them to pay, I'm going to the city council meeting to find out what they can do. Most of you will come on and watch the news. Since I got involved with Save My Vernon, they still gets justice and stuff. Can I talk to you here? No problem. But the last two weeks, nothing about the water bill. I was surprised to see him in court today, and he was in court. But you can let me know, what can they do about it? Are they gonna be reversed with the bills? And should they still pay the water bills? I advise them, they should still pay. Hold receipts and find out what is the outcome of the West Coast County. City council members should have an idea what they should do. This is going on good for Audrey Watson. You know, Marcus doesn't know what's going on, we wouldn't know what's going on. And also too, as a city council, I think these two are standing out more than other ones. Everybody should stand as one. This one press conference, we should see all the city council members standing behind each other, standing together. So the people in Mount Vernon know, y'all all behind what's going on here. Now, I'm gonna pull up the seat, First Street. If y'all, I know y'all didn't sign the form, the work that was done on pavement from Ninth Avenue down to First, looked like little kids painted that street. The whole thing coming out is ridiculous, doesn't make sense. Now, if y'all signed the form, which I know y'all did, and the mayor did it, if you have a warranty on it, you should call him back and let him do it again. I talked to him three weeks ago when they had the shooting on the Western Parkway over there. He said, "I'm doing a good job, I'm paying the streets." Yes, it's a game. You did three streets in Mount Vernon, we know the weather's gonna change, and that's it. Everything's a void. Now, people don't be bad mouthed for talking about him, but he did all of this to himself. I'm gonna retire. I started Save My Vernon because I'm tired of it. I'm not going away. I want the people in Mount Vernon to stand, come together. I want the white planes to, up to where the voting at, up there. And I asked for this for the district leaders in Mount Vernon. I'm gonna try to get them all together, come together as one, and see what we do. Who will be the next mayor is? They should be able to have a civil, basically a citizens committee to find out what we can do to improve the city. You know, we vote your man, we should still have an output and say what, how the city's gonna be run. Not become the mayor and then just do what you wanna do, and look where it's gotten. He's doing what he wanna do. So the next mayor should have a committee, citizens committee in Mount Vernon, of citizens, and help the mayor decide which way the city's run. Some of the ideas also be good, but there's citizens have to. I got a long list of things I got for the next mayor. Less than towers, twenty-four hour armed service. Gang unit, dump amnesty, police force in the beat. Awesome Third Street, back up on Third Street. So I asked the city council members too, just to kinda show the people in Mount Vernon that you're all one, which I know you are, everybody has differences in which way they wanna go. But this situation in City Hall, which you have nothing to do with, you explained to me last time how it works, so I understand, that's why I'm bringing that up. But he has a day called January nineteenth, and I'm staying down in front of the board. Thank you.
Stefan Wanda? Egypt Allen?
Egypt Allen, one twenty South Fourth Avenue, Northern New York. So first of all, I wanna say that my heart is hurting because I don't understand why it is that as constituents and citizens, some of us come up to this podium and attack this body of people. Now, I can say wholeheartedly that I don't agree with politics. But what I don't like is when people come up here and tell half of the story, not all of the story, because all you are not responsible for what happens somewhere in this building and what doesn't happen in this building. I am not tribalistic because it causes separation. I would rather see you guys infused rather than have people come up here that worked in this building and separate this body. I am totally, without reservation or regret, offended by bringing in people that look like you to charge you with something, whether it's real or imagined, to use this body in this forum to exact execution, assault, assassination, or the character of this body is offensive to me. And maybe, just maybe, it deserves closer looking. Who you bring in this building and who you dump? Now, moving forward, I keep coming here talking about housing and mental health as relates to Eppra. We have two hundred and forty-two buildings in Mount Vernon, attached to six thousand one hundred and twenty-nine residents, with the exception of eleven. Those eleven are mothers that have been evicted, and some of them have been evicted because of lack of payment. But the backstory is, it's hard for a millennial or someone that doesn't have life experience to understand that it's because the landlord doesn't give you heat, hot water, there's mildew, there's dry rotten wood on the floor, that you should still continue to pay the rent. Now, everybody feels that way, so they don't pay the rent, they end up in a different position, which is on the other side of their door. But my point is, it takes two thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars to house someone in shelter, and I believe that this distinguished body can go after those slum lords and get the revenue to keep these women in their apartments, in addition to our veterans. We should be fighting for that. We should be fighting for Eppra and affordable housing for our veterans. Everything else is gonna work itself out in a wash. In nineteen eighty, in nineteen seventy-three, the regulations for Eppra were deregulated. In nineteen eighty-three, they came back again with the Honorable Mayor Shaw and Honorable Councilwoman Carmella Holy. So two hundred, two thousand residents, our brothers and sisters from Fleetwood, got together and they complained about the gouging that we are experiencing now. And at eleven fifty-nine sixty seconds, they took action, they went all the way to court, and they won, and they got the regulations back here in Mount Vernon. So that was the twentieth century, just in case. It's the twenty-first century, and we're facing the same thing, not deregulations or deregulated in June of 2019. The Honorable Councilwoman Ferguson offered, I think it was a resolution or legislation, so that you could look at that. Now, here's my point. If you sign it, it's a win. If you, if you don't sign it, it's a lose, because all your constituents, no matter what committee you own, are affected by this, every single one of them. So if you sign it, all you're saying is, I support people not being kicked out of the street. I support wraparound services, I support housing, I support mental health. But if you don't sign it, it gives me the impression that every other municipality is more interested in their constituents and their residents than this body. Now, I know that the mayor has to sign off on it, but he really doesn't, because there's a county executive. So I want us constituents and you guys to take your position and move into your authority and stop cap dancing with this mayor, and stop allowing people from the mayor's body to come in here and circumvent your interests, circumvent your position. And please, whatever you do, stay in position for the people. It's about the people. Everything else in here will work itself out. And I have to say again, I'm offended to no end that one of your colleagues has the mitigating a desk to come up here and insult you in front of this constituent. And I'd like to vote, thank you.
Gentleman?
Good evening, Dr. Monroe, South, one forty South Fourth Avenue. Good evening, council president, honorable council members, good people of Mount Vernon. I'd like to start out by standing in solidarity with my comrade, fellow John Kane, who made an eloquent articulation just now for the in placement and installation of Indigenous Peoples' Day and the according rights and privileges of such a day acknowledged by the body of Mount Vernon's governing partners. So as we go forward in that, I'd like to, especially in light of the oncoming onslaught of consumerism that usually precedes Thanksgiving, seven days, six days from now, I realize that we are going to be unfortunately embedded in our lives with this practice every year of whatever Thanksgiving means to the rest of us. But naturally, you'll also be unwittingly involved in the onslaught of pilgrims and all the other supposedly American apple pie traditions that defits the holiday. And that's why we need Indigenous Peoples' Day. When you sit down with your families at dinner, you might be celebrating whatever it means to be a family, but our children and the rest of us that are also, you know, we are, we are members of families, we are members of community, we are also members of society that are trying to redeem the unfortunate legacy of white supremacy in America. And whether or not you know it, it existed long before Donald Trump got here. And we'd like to make a permanent redemption of that unfortunate fact. Frankly, I think it would be much more difficult to in place this fact if we didn't have a media that was so complicit. In fact, if we had a cooperative community media, which I'd like to kind of segue to as an issue here in Mount Vernon, we would be much less ignorant as a body, as a people, and our children would be much less underserved if we didn't have an administration that undermined the sense of community media as this administration is currently doing by asking Media Magic to leave its media training center as agreed to in the nascent contract for franchise agreement, supposedly signed by, or at least supposedly supported by Spectrum and by Verizon. This media center is a training center that I've volunteered in for the last five years, simply as a service to the community, and it's not a favor to anybody. It's an agreement that Spectrum and Verizon are supposed to be facilitating to the community. It's supposed to be a public service as a connection to the public advice, public access system that still has been neglected by this administration. Without the training center, it will undo what is supposed to be the obligation of an infrastructural solution to media training and solutions that we've been trying to do without a budget, without, without an appropriate contract to govern the public access infrastructure. And yes, without even, for most of 2017 anyway, we even were without internet, if you can believe that, in the media center. So now we have, with all due respect to a very capable Commissioner Morton, who I suppose is beholden to whatever needs the administration is governing his department, we have now the prospect of no media training center as of, well, I've been extended to Saturday to take my personal equipment out of there, but the deadline was yesterday, November thirteenth. So if someone could advise me and the media interests of the community, why this administration has no interest in supporting community media? I'd love to hear the answers. We haven't been able to hear anything from this mayor or any of the five people that he's appointed to our advisory committee as supposed liaisons. He certainly not even advised our actual appointees of the mayor to the capable advisory committee. This is all, this is all at this point, a fairly ridiculous notion in 2018 that community media won't be respected by this administration. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it Shai or Ashin?
Shaw.
Shaw. Shaw Day.
Yes, why, which is the eighth floor?
Shaw Day.
Ever.
Good evening, everyone, and I thank you for having me. My name is actually Dr. Shaw Kabe. I'm here because I do want to amplify, exemplify what-
Hit this for the record.
Okay. I'm actually now a member of Mount Vernon, I happen to work here. I live at P.O. Box 311, Yonkers, New York, 10702. Okay, I took out the time today because I did want to speak on the topic that John Kane has spoken of and that Jeff Monroe has just spoken of. We like to talk about this country being in place of greatness. Well, greatness must start with truth. And one of the truths that we have to tell ourselves is how we got to this place. We didn't get here by accident, we didn't get here because our eyes were completely closed. We got here specifically because of particular policies. And one of the truths that we have to tell this exactly, who was here in this country before many of us got here? I'm not gonna go into the fact that Columbus had the maps because the Moors lost Spain in fourteen eighty-seven, and he sailed in fourteen ninety-two. And everyone knows the Moors knew how to sail because they got into a tangle with the Portuguese army in Gambia in fourteen, I believe, fifty-seven. So they knew how to get to America. So all these things that we want to speak of for Columbus are nice ideas, but they're not the truth. And if we ask our young people, especially what we tell our children, "Tell me the truth." One of the things that we have to speak on is the truth of how, again, we got here. One of the ways that we can speak on that truth of how we got here and where we want to go right now is to have not just an Indigenous Peoples' Day, because we are now all indigenous to this land, and we all have this as our ancestor. And that is the truth, whether we recognize it or not. And DNA cannot tell you all these things. But you do need to speak on the fact that they were people here and that they had attitudes. And one of the beautiful things that Mount Vernon can do, because it is a beautiful place, and it is also noted that Mount Vernon, because it is in the Lower Hudson Valley, if you look in any travel magazine, they will tell you that this is one of the most beautiful places in America, if not the world. By having an Indigenous Peoples' Day, we can recognize the beauty that was here that allowed all of us, and I mean all of us, to build ourselves from the beauty of this land that was given by the universe. It allowed all of us to grow and to become what we truly should be. And by looking at the Indigenous people, we must look at the African portion of that, because the Africans were here long before Columbus hit the Caribbean, because once again, he never hit the Americas. One of the ways we were going to be able to do this, because I also work with WBAI, and we got a show, and although I don't live in Mount Vernon, we highlight what's going on in Mount Vernon each week. And by highlighting what's going on in Mount Vernon, we work through Media Magic and the Media Center. No one pays any of us. We do it because it's a service for the people here. So I'm asking that you not only consider an Indigenous Peoples' Day, but to have something that goes on monthly throughout the year, where we can get the information and spread it throughout the community, allow the community to become involved and interact with each of us on a monthly basis, and we can begin to start telling the truth. Because we've all seen, and we hear it every day, even if you don't have Twitter, God bless America, we all hear what lies can do. And we don't need any more division, any more lies. It's time to tell the truth. And we need to tell the truth about Media Magic. It has done a great deal for Mount Vernon. People have come up here and they've come to me and told me that they've come because of the things they've heard on the radio show. Without Media Magic, where would you be? Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, Thomas Kelly, please.
Thomas Kelly, to all the questions in your place. Has the date been set for the Board of Estimates to discuss the 2019 budget? If it is, would you let me, let me know, let the public know after we finish public speaking? And I came here because I heard either from the general news or somebody that the Water Department problem is gonna be discussed tonight. So the gentleman talked about it early, the water bills, and myself. Would you please discuss it, get us up to date? I only found out recently that they write their own checks and so forth. It doesn't go through the controllers department. But if one or two million dollars was supposed to come to the general fund, and none have come for the years sixteen and seventeen, I'm wondering why the control, Maureen, and she's not here to defend herself, and I'm not accusing her of anything, but that's one or two percent of the budget, and it's a big hole. I'm wondering if one million was surplus in fifteen, came in sixteen, but the sixteen, seventeen, that's a big hole. I'm just wondering, you know, why it wasn't- Now, she had two years of fights with the mayor. So it may have come out, and I may have missed it, and it may have been a private thing and not a public thing, so I don't know. As for the control, I did make some comments a few weeks ago, and I was thinking about it, and Councilwoman Copeland, you would probably remember this, you're probably the only one here. Jahan Edwards is here, he was involved. But Clinton Young won in November of 2007. And in January of 2008, the Board of Estimates met and approved about an additional one million dollars to the budget. Much of that was to increase the salaries of the Corporation Council and their staff. And it doesn't matter who it was, I don't know if Karen Waltsi, Jahan Edwards, or Phil Randolph was the city council member of the Board of Estimates. But I remember Maureen lamenting to me that my surplus has been cut- lamenting to me that my surplus has been cut in half from like two million to one million. So what am I getting at? I haven't talked to Deborah Reynolds, but I suspect that these invoices that she hasn't paid were not in the budget, and your Board of Estimate didn't need to add these expenses to the budget. The mayor may not have even brought them up, and he went ahead and engaged outside vendors, the vendors submitted invoices, and Deborah Reynolds, this is not in the budget, wasn't approved by, added to the budget by the Board of Estimate, why should I pay these bills? So I don't know, I don't know who's wrong, maybe you guys can update me on this? But it's a real embarrassment to the city. I don't know who's responsible, the mayor, or the control of it. This is ridiculous. I guess that's it. Please talk about the next year's budget, the check problems, and the water department. Thank you.
James Bur.
My name is Daniel Pelles.
I'm sorry?
Daniel Pelles.
Yeah, the name?
Yeah, my son here.
Oh, okay. But that's not the speaker, the person who signed up to speak, that's the speaker. Sorry, ma'am. Sir, you can stand there with him. Please take your name and address for the record.
James Bur, 9 West 3rd Street, Mount Vernon. Okay, I own the store on 3rd Street, 9 West, and I took a meal from President's Police Department, and I haven't been getting paid for months at a time, up to four months now. And I'm wondering why does it take so long for them to sign me, so I can be paid? I've been paying out of my pocket for four months now, and I'm wondering, you know, why it was it takes so long for them to pay? And I'm not continuing to do it anymore till they can pay.
Does that include your remarks? The council, after everyone speaks, and then the council responds? But you have up to four minutes? Is that all that you wanted to say?
Yeah, basically, yes.
Okay, we'll respond at the end. Thank you, Mr. Bur. Brenda L. Crump, I'm like my A, so I'll give you your L.
I would like to, oh, yeah, sure, sorry, it's been a while, and I heard you, forgive me. Brenda L. Crump, 432 Dunham Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, 10553. Forgive that, forgive me, please. Two Mount Vernon City Council members, all the members, Lisa Copeland, Andre Wallace, Janice Huarte, Delia Farquharson, and Marcus A. Griffith. Will y'all please update the community on the status of the residency lawsuit case? A certificate of readiness for trial without jury was submitted to the courts on May 3rd, 2018 by lawyer Jeffrey D. Bus, representing Joe Sospicio, Lawrence Macari, and others. Please update the community on this. This has been before the courts for some time, and I name each and every councilman, councilperson, because when asked by a community person, I don't know who's the head of what committee and what committee is under, but each councilperson has been elected to serve the people and to represent the people, and whoever's over whatever committee should be reporting back to the council people as a whole. So anyone that's asked should be able to answer sufficiently for the community. And I have not been able to get really any sufficient answers to this, I'm asking the body as a whole. Please address this matter and update the community on the status and where things stand with this residency lawsuit case. And has the council looked to work together to change anything in the charter that needs to be changed if we don't fall into this condition, this situation again, you know, going forward in reference to residency charter with employees that are hired? Please also let the community know when is the next court date and if it's open to the public in regards to the residency case. Also, last week, in Council Andre Wallace's official capacity as a public officer and as a trustee of the Public's Fund, filed an Article 78 petition in Westchester County Supreme Court for a temporary restraining on the TRO and a preliminary injunction against Mount Vernon's Water Department, seeking among other things to halt any further collection of unauthorized water usage bills, to preserve evidence, and to establish and plan to get a refund or credit to people who have been overcharged. I understand that the next court date is Tuesday, November 20, and that is open to the public, and it's at White Plains Supreme Court, 111 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. I've studied, I've read, and I've seen the press conference, I've been away out of town for a while handling some family business and to come back and trying to gather my water bills, because I want to know who is it that we need to meet with as residents to go over our water bill, to understand our water bill. We're paying our taxes, which are high, we're putting our children through school, people are working, people are busy with their day-to-day lives, and so we're not expecting, if these allegations are true, to be ripped off, overcharged with our water bill. We get our bills, at least in my household, we get our bills, we're struggling, but we pay our bills, and we try to pay them in a timely fashion. So I would like to know, as others have already spoken, what do we need to do as residents, as residents in regards to this water bill situation? And I do want to thank Councilman Andre Wallace for bringing this forward. I don't know what all the council is doing behind closed doors, but he's bringing it forward. I saw Councilman Griffiths there during the press conference, and Councilwoman Delia Farquharson, via the press conference she did not attend, and provided a statement which Councilman Griffiths read. But I would like to see our council work as a whole, I'm not saying that you're not working as a whole, because I don't know what's going on behind closed doors. I can only judge and make statements and assumptions by what I see in front of the closed, in front of the doors. So I'm asking, please let us know as residents what we need to do in regards to this water bill situation, because it is really not right for all that we do here in Mount Vernon, that we now have to worry about our water bill, is it our con ed bill, is it what kind of bills is that we have to worry about being gouged, being, you know, theft money being taken if these things are true? I don't know if they are or aren't, but please speak to that, and please let us know what time this court date is on November 20, so those of us who can attend, can attend and get information, so to speak, straight from the horse's mouth and not to hear spins and twists after the court cases and the stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Jana Edwards.
Greetings, Council, from O'Callaghan, Honorable President of the City Council. My name is Jana Edwards, I live at 431 Luger Avenue, and I come before you mainly for veterans. Understanding that I am a veteran, I was probably one of the only veterans that sat on the council for many years, but people didn't really realize that because I wasn't acting like a veteran, I wasn't speaking for myself. But I think we have one of the best directors or commissioners of Veterans Affairs since I've been in government, and I've been in government long enough to remember, the first person that I met was Mr. Dumpster, who passed away many years. His son was the chief of police for many years, so that's how far I go back. But it's very important that we have a strong Veterans Agency, and the agency has been brought to the 21st century over the last couple of years, and I really appreciate what she's doing. And there's some of us who remember when she spoke before us, she came before us and she was a rebel. So I was glad that she was hired, because she no longer came and jumped on us. Before I go on, I'd like to compliment you on the new policy that you have, because when I called up, I had to get permission not to, I think you have to come in now to sign up? I think, no? Okay, well, there's a new policy in place, and I think it works, because I think the worst time of my tenure was coming to these council meetings and getting beat up every two weeks. That was the hardest part, and it really stressed me out. But it's, again, very important that we support, and we have two people here that come every year and have been dealing with taxes for many years. I hope they support an increase in whatever she needs, because I've even had to go to Yonkers for services in the past, and I don't like that. I haven't been down to her office in a while, but I know it's been modernized to make veterans feel good. Every year it comes up, we thank a veteran. So give a veteran what they need. If she says it's a need, it's a need, okay? And because she is a veteran herself. And I think the first person, when I was moving to Vietnam, I saw a woman veteran when I woke up. Okay, it was a woman veteran, so I know veterans are out there. The CCVA, who's led by Calvin Parker, who was here, I asked him, was he speaking, because I didn't want to speak before him, and I was called up immediately. But it's very, very important that we support us. Support us by thanking us, or to support us by giving a little bit more, because I think, understanding, you know what the Bible says, it's very little that's really given to the Veterans Agency as far as a budget for the year. So whatever she needs, give it to her.
Give it to her.
It's one thing that's important to me, that it was Councilman Griffith, and I believe it was, I think it was just Councilman Griffith and I, in 2015, we passed legislation for this CDAW, C-E-D-A-W. Just Google it, and you'll find out, it's the committee to eliminate all forms of discrimination against women and girls. We are the only municipality in all of Westchester that has passed that legislation, but it's another step that it goes. It's, I would like to see it as an ordinance. An ordinance would make it law, okay? I've been working with the committee over the last couple of weeks, and I'll be calling you probably after the holidays, but that's a very important, especially in today's climate, we need to do much more for women. I didn't realize how much is still lacking for women, and so look out for it over the next couple of years, that we do more in Mount Vernon. Yes, we are the only ones in Westchester that passed that legislation. I think I saw a head shake, but it's not, but we're the only ones that's passed the legislation, but it's pending, but it's not legislation being passed. There was one mentioned, well, 467 East 5th Street. In 2016, I did a survey with the DPW and others, there's cars that are parked in two lots right next to Dr. Zee's house, okay? They're parked five deep, they do bodywork there, okay? And I called the ordinance officer a couple of days ago and asked her to check into it. When Maureen Walker was here, she said that one of the houses are owned by the city, that's why they couldn't evict the people. I ask you, please, and I know your time, okay? I ask you, please, to look into it. I don't know whose department of public works, are you still Department of Public Works? Okay, and I know, I think, here it is product safety and code, so I'll be checking with you. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
My name is Ricardo Singleton, I live 517 South 7th Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, 10550. Good evening, Council President, Council Members, and people of Mount Vernon. As I said, my name is Ricardo Singleton, resident of Mount Vernon, and a 1974 graduate of Mount Vernon High School. I spent 40 years in the United States Army and served in three combat summers, Bosnia, Iraq, and Afghanistan, and I'm now a retired lieutenant colonel. I'm here to support the Veteran Service Commissioner of Mount Vernon, Ms. Reed. Ms. Reed is a one-woman office, and she needs to have help. As quiet as it gets, the reason she's there is to provide services to the veterans. One of the things that we don't talk about is that 14 to 17 veterans a day commit suicide. And the reason why they commit suicide is because they don't receive services. And having Ms. Reed as one-person shop, she can't provide the necessary services for the veterans here in Mount Vernon. So it's up to you, Council, to provide her that help so that she can provide services for us. So in addition to this office that I'm hearing about that doesn't have enough help, there's also a problem with monies. I'm hearing that the control here in Mount Vernon is holding funds. And the question I have for the council is, what are you going to do about that? There should be a system of checks and balances. Are we holding control and check? Also, do I hear that these monies, if not used by December 31st, we lose them? So are we willing to lose the monies that was given to us by the state and not provide the necessary services for the veterans so that they don't harm themselves or others? So what is the council going to do to correct those injustices and give Commissioner Reed additional help in her office? I'm not a politician, but I am a veteran, and I do vote. Thank you very much.
Peace and blessings. I live 252 God Avenue. I'm the Honorable Stefan Riff, and these veterans come in here to speak on, you know, what's right for them, and I'm a veteran, and I'm probably the highest ranking one out of all of us in this room, and we are not receiving our benefits because we are getting healthcare instead of the benefits. So our benefits will override any kind of healthcare, because that's already due for us, because we are residents of Mount Vernon, and I was born and raised there. But on top of everything else, y'all are sitting here as a council member of all, so it has to be a counselor over you in order for you to do the right thing for the community. As I am here with all of the correct paperwork sent to office, I mean, I have everything as done, and not only that, you are talking out of the side of your mouth, out of the side of your head, you're out of order, you haven't violated your hopes, your pledges, you violated everything that you possess within your powers to control a community or either a country. So if you don't know that this is the federal state, the city don't own nothing here, and we are, I'm a two-time New York State Federation Champion also, when we got the key with Blackwood was the mayor in 1980, we are, I'm a key holder for this town. And your refusal of a father, refusal of a grandfather, refusal of a brother, a cousin, a sister, an uncle, that's the original people from this land, is damn right like a shame to each and every one of you. If you call yourself members of a board, then you have to have a counselor, and you're sitting in a, this is a judge chamber, and we don't even have our own courtrooms, you're closed down in the United States martial law. You're closed down, every kind of self-defense, civil defense, everything that we need in order for us to provide for one another as the original people from this land. You're putting Rosa Parks story to shame, you're putting Harriet Tubman to shame, you're putting everybody to shame, because you're out of order, thinking you're African-Americans, that's what makes all, every one of your hands are filthy. So when you're dealing with taking with your left hand and taking with your right hand, you don't have any hands to get back with. And here I am, standing here, honorable, other than honorable, it's not a final discharge, it's a pride of general. It's one of the greatest things that you can accomplish inside of a military. I have two meritorious men. I'm a key holder, two-time New York State Federation Champion, five-star All-American, most honorable nation. Should I continue? I mean, none of you are greater with knowledge, wisdom, I've been to three different colleges, I've been all over the world, six different countries, I did everything that you have not even thought about leaving this country to do, but yet you will bring in other people from other countries and try to provide leadership for us in which they don't even know the foundation in which we come from. The project is the center of the earth, it's the X is in the middle of the park. You have four pieces of grass, that's land, and then you have two thirty... And then you have two thirty, that's five. And you have two forty is six. And two forty-one is seven. And two fifteen is eight. And two seventy is nine. And when you look on the corner of them, then you will see seventh and third is tenth. And seven and fourth is eleven. Eight and four is twelve. And you have eight and twelve, eight and four is twelve on your left side. And you have eight and twelve, nine and three are twelve on your right-hand side. You don't know these things because you're not from the original places that the project. And that's where you have a problem into the slits. Because you're house niggers and field niggers. And then you have to be balanced with both. And being that I'm balanced with both of even my mother's sisters and the rest of them for us to be received exactly what it's due to be. And I go into here, we don't even have our birth certificates in this building. We don't even have our veterans' paperwork in this building. Everything is cut in half. And I'm not no slith, I'm a mastermind, merciful and loving. And I come to y'all with this. I don't come here every time we have a meeting and nothing get done while I'm talking to y'all. Y'all need to be held accountable. Time for y'all stand tall because I'm presenting this to you as a leader and not a follower. Anybody who blessed you, be right about it. You're a better victim than control.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Thank you all for coming out. We're gonna, um, uh, Councilwoman Wallace, I'll let you, um, because several people asked about the water department issue that falls under here, so may I start with you, the responsible?
Excuse me, sir?
Sir, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir.
Well, we aim to, I will, I will, uh, address, uh, Commissioner Reed, uh, first and the veterans. We understand your frustration, uh, with the control. Seems like everybody's frustrated because nothing's getting paid. Can't hear you. Speak up. I understand your frustration. Other bills are not being paid as well. So there's a lot of things and a lot of frustration throughout this actual building. Uh, I've spoken to Ms. Reed and Commissioner Reed several occasions. And I've spoken to the controller on several occasions, bringing up the same concerns that she has addressed. Uh, why the money's not being turned over, I don't know. Uh, we're trying to get answers. There are things that the council have been doing. Uh, we've been passing legislation, some of those things haven't been funded. So we know that there is a serious situation with the controller's office and how things are being done at this moment. Uh, unfortunately, the only way for the council to address these kinds of situations is to go to court. Now, however, we've been going to court awful lot. So a lot of folks look at us as if we're always continuously fighting. And we are, because there is so much things that are being done in this building that are not correct, that needs to go before a judge to straighten out, okay? I don't know if that's going to be the case or when that's gonna be the case to try to straighten those things out. Or we're gonna have to have a big meeting between all parties and all branches, and we've gotta work this out. And we've gotta work it out quick. Because there is no reason that a grant should be lost because it's not paid. So that is a situation and that is a problem. And we know we have to address it, and I will continue to talk to the controller. And I'm sure all my other colleagues continue to talk to the controller on a lot of different issues as well. And then we'll finally, hopefully, get to the bottom of this and get this done. I went down and spoke to her, I think it was Friday we spoke, and, um, we're doing what we can, but we can't write the checks. You know, we can only pass the legislation and say, uh, we need you to pay this, and she has to pay. And right now, it's not getting done on some of the things and some of the issues. I don't know why, but we all have to communicate better and we have to figure out a way to make the city function. Because there is too much dysfunction in this building. And many people know this, and everybody says. Okay, so I will continue to go down, and I will talk to the controller again tomorrow about it. And I will continue to go every day until we get something done. I'm sure other members are going down there and speaking to the controller as well about several things. So I, they will continue to go down there and ask as well. So it's not on the council, you know, we are limited to what we can do because the council is one of the branches that don't run the day-to-day operation. The other two branches run those operations. The mayor's office runs the day-to-day operation and everything else. And the controller has complete control of the funds, and she runs that operation. We can only write legislation requesting things for them to do, but if they don't do it, you know, the only resort we have is to go to court. Now, leading out of that issue, and I know people want to know about the water bills. Yes, we are back in court with that. We will be back in court on the 20th of this month to address a lot of the other issues. Uh, this is not something that just popped out to go and sue. This is something that has been going on for over a year. I've sent letters continuously to the water department and CC'd everybody on the letters so everyone knows what's going on with the water department. Funds are being used out of that water department that should not be going outside of the water department. Bills are being paid out of the water department that should not be paid out of the water department. I've been questioning this for a lot, for a long time, okay? Uh, basically, the money for the last two years hasn't been turned over. I actually started working on this two years ago, in 2016, when Maureen Walker was here. And she was trying to get the money from the water department and came to me, and we worked on it, and we never got that money. So we had to sue. Because now, I'm gonna give you most of the reality of this case so that people can know, all right? A lot of money in that water department has been misappropriated. Your bills were then raised to cover that misappropriation, okay? The auditors have not been able to audit the water department because the scam, I wouldn't say scam. Let me just take that word back. The, whatever, the plot, okay? To recover the money is now being on the backs of the taxpayers, okay? When I went and approached this situation, when Councilman Griffith and I had that press conference, I am very clear of what is going on. Make no mistakes. There is not a 13% increase on your water, it is 43%. If you look at your water bills, and I keep telling people, don't believe me. You can hold me as a liar if you want. Just check your water bills. And now that we went to court, and if anybody watched what's going on in today's proceeding on another level, you would see that now, because I CC'd the AG and the Attorney, the Attorney General of State and everybody else, the state controller, in these conversations, right? Now, the AG has sent out a letter that is public that's saying that these, there is new issues and new things that has come up with a grand jury, it's all over the place now, has now convened because money is missing out of the water department, and they are going to address this. It is a whole other issue. When you see in the paper, Lo Ha, that they, they are talking about money being used for personal use and personal legal bills out of a department, I don't have to tell you what's going on and what that department is. But we had to sue. The council is working, we're all working on different things. I may have showed up by myself for that, but they are working on different subpoenas and different issues and attacking this situation in different ways. So please, when people say we are not together on this, everybody agrees that this is a situation that's sitting up here under the council. How we handle it and go about it, we're all doing different things and focusing on it in different ways. But it's gonna get handled. And when we go back, we, actually, we won our TRO, we got it, okay? And for your question, Mr. Van Will, or what you should do, or whether you should tell people, like I tell other folks, pay your bill of what it used to be. Because we are eventually going to have to credit people back their money. And that is where we are. So the bottom line is, I'm not saying that we're gonna pay you back cash, but I'm sure we can get a future credit because of the situation that we are gonna be left in. Now, if there's money that's missing and money that, there's a deficit in there, and you're trying to cover it up, and you take all of these people's bills and you double and triple them and put the money back, and then we have to give it back, that deficit is going to arise in the water department, which is going to cause the city a problem down the road. This is no secret now. And I tell everybody, keep your eyes on, be more involved. Keep your eyes on what's going on on News 12, read the papers, okay? Go to the court on the 20th with us, you know, on the 20th to hear from the judge, what the judge is saying yourselves. They have to now answer why they raised the water rate without city council approval. Section 29 clearly, sorry, I did, let me not charge. But in the charter, it clearly says, I think it's 2629, that the water rates are set by the city council. We have not set the rates. We have not changed the rates. We have not raised your rates. It was done without permission. And it was already mentioned, and they already said on record that they did it. So first of all, you need to roll it back, and everybody needs to get a credit for the overpayment because this is taxpayers' dues.
What time?
And, what, sorry. 9:30 November 20th, the council will be in court waiting for the mayor's office and the water department to respond and explain why they raised the money, why, uh, raised your rates, and why they are spending dollars out of the water department, which we also asked for a freeze. And we are going to get accounting of the water department because these accountings, forensic accounting, need to get into the water department so that the taxpayers could know how much of their money have been spent on other things it should not have been spent on. And eventually, hopefully, we can recover some of that money and some of those loss, okay? That we don't have to pick up the burden. And my, my, when I made my statements, there is a lot of people here in Mount Vernon on fixed income. When you raise their rates, it's not like they can pick up the phone and call Social Security and say, I need an increase in mine to cover my debts. It's the same for seniors. And they are now putting seniors on the tax, uh, uh, on the bill of not paying. And then what they're doing is creating a problem because the interest and everything is building up. And when they can't pay it, then you're gonna hold a judgment against their homes. It's wrong. So we have to take action so the council, we don't wanna sue, but we have to do what we have to do to protect the people of this city. Um, Stefan Ritter, thank you as always for coming out. Uh, we look forward to seeing you again. You always have, uh, information that is very fruitful. Uh, Egypt Allen, the same thing. Thank you for coming out and bringing certain things to our attention. And, uh, I know that there is, uh, I know you're fighting for, uh, the homeless and a lot of these issues, and, uh, we will address those. Um, Jeff Monroe, thank you for coming up also, Media Magic. I'm just hearing about this for the first time. I can't understand why you guys are exiting that building in the first place. So that's something like I wanna talk to you about at the break and kind of find out exactly what is going on with that particular situation. And oh, yeah, regarding the spectrum contract, the advisory board, we need to work on that ASAP because I got a call from people from the library board that we're going to lose a quarter of a million-dollar grant if we can't get it together. So we're losing money every day if we don't get this right and we don't work together. Um, Sean Day, I understand, and, uh, with the indigenous people, and thank you for your comments on that. And we will, we'll have a discussion. Mr. Keller, uh, I think that I answered those questions with the water department. I can talk to everybody at the break, uh, as well as that too. And, you know, because we have other council members that are gonna speak, so we'll talk about that as well. We're just trying to get through here. Uh, and James Byrd, I'm not sure of what that situation is. I'd like to find out more about it at the break because I don't understand, I don't know what the contract is or if you have a contract or if you're working for the city and not getting paid, I can't.
Mommy!
Oh, no. Uh, well, I can, but we're gonna talk about that at the break too, and we'll figure that out. Um, Yohanna Edwards, I know he was here, he left, uh, with the vets. We'll look into that, and I'll make sure I pass by 467 South Fifth Street tomorrow. Uh, and the same for Mr. Singleton, we, I think I addressed that because we do understand, uh, the problem with, uh, things not getting paid, things not moving. And regarding the shooting range, uh, with the heat slug, that's something we could also talk at the break. I understand, I just was filled in on that last night. Um, but we'd like to check with you on the break about those things with that particular, uh, site. Uh, and at that point, I don't wanna take up too much time. I know everybody else is speaking, so I'm trying to go fast. You're kind of supposed to present, and thank you for your extra time.
Yeah! Councilwoman Wallace?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, let me just begin by thanking the community for coming out tonight and speaking with your mind. Um, this is being one of the few opportunities that you have to address the city government in an open and, um, unencumbered way. So thank you for coming out tonight and having the courage to speak. Let me just address all the speakers regarding, um, in this People's Day. Thank you for coming and making your comments. I agree that there is a need to reconcile the gap between our values and our history. And that's, um, something we're discussing. And so again, if you're making those comments, and I'm sure that the city will be discussing this. Um, with regards to the Director Reed and the veterans, first I wanna thank all the veterans for their service to our country and to this community. In particular, I want to thank and state that I appreciate Director Reed and what she's, um, attempting to do as Director of Veterans Services to improve the services to our veterans. As Councilman Edwards stated, um, often a lot of our veterans are not able to get the services that they need here, and therefore they go elsewhere. They have to go to Yonkers, they go to White Plains. And there's a lot of other gold that is being sent to, um, other service agencies who could be serviced here in their community locally where it's most convenient and most beneficial to them. Um, I want to say that I am very proud of this body because we did pass legislation, um, increasing the director's salary so that it's commensurate with, um, her credentials and her responsibilities and, um...
Mr. Ritter?
Mr. Ritter? Please, you had your opportunity, please, let the Councilwoman Commissioner. And also relative to market labor data, I guess, is we see Director Reed is very focused on the facts and looking at data and, and evidence to, um, inform, um, her decisions. And, and so we really appreciate, um, that from her. It's, the challenge is that what is routine or should be routine is not. Um, and we find ourselves in sort of a, what I'd say, so to speak, where things that should be, um, aren't. Um, and, and the solution are the best way forward is sometimes not clear or not a direct path. And so there are, you know, I think efforts. I, um, contact or have contacted Assemblyman Preble, as he is, um, the source of this funding. And, um, following up in conversations with him this week to discuss how, um, any, any, any options or suggested solutions to help support the Veterans Service Agency and to, um, alleviate the issues. Just to address the concern of, I believe it was, Mr. Singleton, um, it is true that if by the end of the year we do not transfer the funds as we have, um, passed a legislation, those funds will go over into the general fund for 2019 budget, which means that it's not available for the veterans. means that it's not available for the Veterans Agency. And that is something that we can't let happen before the end of the year. It would be an injustice to the department and to all the veterans that it is there to serve. To the other, to the other speakers, there were several lots mentioned, to Ms. Med regarding the buses, to what you, Councilwoman Edwards stated about a lot of... To the speakers, Ms. Med and new Councilman Edwards, who mentioned some locations where there are vehicles, there are access vehicles, and the impact it's having on the quality of life, and support moving into, into those locations and what can be done. Same thing with Mr. Byrd, I'm sorry to hear that the services that you are providing to the city are not being paid, unfortunately, or just another example of the collateral damage that is taking place as a result of the Department of Finance's policy and how they're choosing to deal, how the controller is choosing to deal with the city finances. We will need more, as Councilman Edwards asked, we need more information, so that we can tell directly on that. With regards to the Media Magic and moving its offices out of the Duluth Center, Mr. Monroe, we have spoken, you've brought me up to speed, at least, you know, as to what has transpired up until this point. I have followed up with Commissioner Morton and understanding that he has his own programmatic pressures on his end, and trying to reconcile what that means and what that means with our people contract and our public access situation. And clearly, it's having a domino effect across the board, not just what is happening directly with Media Magic, but also, I'm hearing for the first time from the councilman here, that it's potentially impacting our ability qualified for grant funding, and that's significant, and we need to become a priority for us to really address that at this time. So it's an ongoing issue that we will continue to look into. I don't mind, I mean, again, I want to thank everyone for coming out, there are some issues here that I will defer to my council chairs. I do wanna just address quickly, Mr. Van Lu, I think you'd appreciate all your efforts and your involvement and, 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 getting, speaking your mind and getting out information, because that is important for the community. I wanna also note that while it may be that it looks like we're not all together, we are all together, we are a body, and we discuss our issues behind, it seems, so that we can come to a consensus and determine how to move forward. And sometimes that means that you don't necessarily see us all together in front of a camera. We do have other professional responsibilities outside of the council, so sometimes that means that scheduling doesn't permit us to show up at the same time. So with regards to the press conference, while you may not have seen all of us present, it doesn't mean that we weren't together, so I just want to reassure you that we are working. Do you wanna stay in the council chamber? No, no, it's out of order, at the break you can. No, no. At the break, it's not a matter of course.
Let them finish.
It didn't do that just in Vietnam, I'm not a speaker. It didn't do that just in Vietnam.
No, sir, I appreciate, I appreciate your service, but you have rules of the chamber. I'm listening to them. Continue, Councilwoman, please. Thank you. So I just want to note that we have three committees, there are four committees, each one of us is the chair of that committee, and that is the responsibility of that chair to focus and address those specific partners and issues. We do share our information, sometimes not always at the same time, but it's, I just want to refer to you and to the public that this, we do, this is a body, we have to respect the body and act accordingly, and while we may not always agree on how to proceed, but we respect each other's opinion, and, and, and that we want to make sure that we're doing the business of the people with the respect and that it deserves. And we recognize that at this time, thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to the community, and I want to first take the opportunity to salute the veterans, I did not have the opportunity to attend the Veterans' Day service, because till now I did not find my invitation, I'm not saying it was not sent, but I did not find it. And what I did was, I called Councilman Wallace, he said he did not have one either, and he did not know about an event. I called Councilwoman Duarte, she called me back subsequently, and said that an invitation had been sent in some package, I did not have one. And Councilman Wallace informed me that he spoke with the clerk of law, and the clerk had, did not have any record of any invitation. So my attempt was to make sure that I was present to honor the veterans, to give my gratitude, to show my respect. So, so that was my question, and I'm going to say that there is dysfunction in this city, and there's nobody who can deny that there's dysfunction in the city, we see it every day. I will not respond emotionally, no matter how much I have attacked, I will not respond emotionally, because this is not about emotions, this is about being solutions oriented, being solutions focused, being level headed, so that we can move forward together. And I did put on Facebook what the directors said, and it's still there, because till now I have not found my invitation. Councilwoman Duarte showed me her invitation last night, which she said came in an envelope, but I did not receive that. So, Director Reed, I understand your frustration, I am frustrated for you that you are not able to get everything that you need to fully execute your duties as director and serving our veterans. I understand that it is very difficult for you to deal with the controller, and what I said at the last meeting when you spoke is that I'm ready to help. I saw you in the hallway subsequently, and I asked if there was anything that you needed me to do. So I'm, I'm still here, and I did speak with the controller, I did, I attempted to say, what can we do to resolve it, so that this, this does not continue, because this is a perpetuation of the dysfunction, it really is, and it should not continue. You should not have to be struggling with this every day, because like I said the last time, this has to be difficult. So my intention is not to add to your frustrations, so, and I do not take it personally, I do not take anything you say personally, because I understand that you are facing challenges that are not of your doing, and if there's anything I can do to help, believe me, I stand ready to help you, to help our veterans in our community. So Mr. Kane, thank you, sir, for traveling all this way to address our community. I do appreciate that, I appreciate the fact that what you have done for us is to broach what is a difficult subject, because there are those among us who hold dear what we challenge, this idea that the narrative is a false narrative, and that when we hold up one aspect of our history, that we denigrate another aspect of our history. And so we need to come to a place where we can reconcile what has happened, all the things, the dark paths, the difficult history that is ours, and I think that's a way for us to do it. A way for us to do it is not to disrespect others, but to elevate those who have been disrespected and oppressed for so long, and I think that would be a step forward for our community, to say, let us recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, because we see ourselves in the Indigenous people. Right now, we are all the others in this society, right? We are all unified by being the other, because if you're not Nubian, if you're not Huaianarian, then you are not recognized as a value to the society, and that constitutes so many of us. So I think that it would be a brave step for this community, and I stand ready, sir, to promote that argument. As an immigrant to this community, as someone who works with people who suffer with mental health challenges and difficulties in life, I understand that we must stand bravely and courageously and face our dark history and address it, and it's never going to be easy. So I thank you, sir, for traveling here and for recognizing. Ms. Med, I see the buses, I've seen, Councilman Wallace pointed to you, yeah, and I cannot understand how that happened, and I think it's something that needs to be investigated, I don't know if it's, if it's zoned for that, if you were informed, that this, the community was informed that this was going to happen, but I think that, that it deserves to be investigated, I don't know which committee this falls under, but I think that we should, as a body elected to represent, to find out what has happened and find out how we come to a resolve that will at least alleviate some of the health concerns that we've expressed, and some of the environmental concerns that I'm sure is affecting the community as a whole. So thank you for coming to share your concerns, madam, and, you know, I will find out who's committee that falls under, and then we will work to address that. Mr. Van Lu, thank you, sir, I hope you had a good vacation.
Yes.
So I'm gonna say that, you know, Councilman Wallace addressed the water situation, I think we're kind of like in a slippery slope, we don't want to tell folks not to pay their water bills, because next thing you know, they're, they're having gains against their properties for not paying their water bills, so we really don't want to do that. I think, you know, trying to find a resolve of how we're gonna get our money back, because I'm one of those, like, my water bill went up really significantly, and I think it's really concerning to me, and I want my credit back as well, but I won't stop paying my water bill as it's assessed, because I just don't wanna fall into any debt with the water department. I think it's better that we pay it and then work to get our money back afterwards, you just don't wanna, you know, fall into debt, and I think that's important. I'm gonna say that, Councilman Wallace and I talked about the lawsuit that he filed, and I hesitated, because we have filed so many lawsuits, and when I see the bills for these lawsuits, they give me pause, they seriously give me pause, 'cause it's not cheap. Like, so when we're paying like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, for, for legal fees, and we don't have enough money for our young people or for other things, then that gives me pause, so it's not that I don't want us to get our water back, but, but I, I, I'm trying to figure out another way. How do we get other agencies, other, you know, legal entities in our, in our state or in our county, to, on our behalf, say, "That's wrong," and how, you know, "Let's get our money back." How do we get that done without having to file these expensive lawsuits? 'Cause trust me, these lawsuits are cheap, and our budget next year is not gonna be pretty, so every penny is gonna count. So I hesitated with that lawsuit, I'm gonna tell you, it's not that I don't want people to get their money back, but I hesitated, because I think that it's expensive to file lawsuits. Mr. Rida, thank you for being here. Ms. Allen, thank you, you put these words that are so poignant and so meaningful into the dialogue, because the tribalism, right, and it's about dividing us based on differences or based on perceived differences, and so we don't want to do that, because we are all, believe it or not, in this boat together, right? And so that's a really important thing to recognize, that we are not common enemies, that we are common, in many cases, victims, we are common in the cause together, and so we are stronger when we are fighting the common enemy for the good of this community. So thank you, Ms. Allen, I wanna say that on the seventeenth of December at six-thirty at one thirty-four Southwest Seventh Street, Mount Alden Faith Apostolic Church, I will be hosting a forum on housing. It'll be a forum on housing to talk about eviction prevention, bringing panelists into the community, so that people who are at risk of losing their house will understand what's, what they can do, what can they do, how can you learn? Diversion prevention, rent regulation, you know, there's things to help folks protect housing, because right now, our vacancy rate in Mount Vernon is zero, there's, there are no places available, folks can't even find a room to rent, and so that's a problem, there's a housing crisis in Mount Vernon, and it affects poor people, and that's why we should stand together, right? That's why we should stand together. Mr. Monroe, thank you, sir, for facilitating John Kane's attendance here today, I appreciate that, I appreciate the work that you do to bring knowledge and to our community. Shaw, the same to you, thank you, Shaw, for everything that you do, and for being here this evening. Mr. Keller, I too want to see the two thousand nineteen budget, to see where we are, you know, we've talked about the water department troubles, and you're right, if there were no remittances for all these years to the water department, what was done then? Why hesitate until now? So that's a big question that needs to be answered, like, why was there action taken until now? Because if there was no remittances in sixteen and seventeen, what happened? Mr. Byrd is not here, but I, but I too want to know what's going on with that feeling of prisoners. Mrs. Crump, that conversation actually came up, and so I'm sure the committee chair will speak to you about that, about the residency lawsuit, because, yeah, we have to get up to date on that as a new council person. Councilman, former Councilman Edwards left, but, but there are concerns that I continue to talk to him about, and he did tell me about the meeting that he's planning. Mr. Singleton, thank you for your service, sir, and you're right, that we need to figure out how to actively give uninterrupted services to our veterans, and how do we address the controller? She's an independently elected controller, we can try to reason with her, but short of taking her to court, there's nothing that we can do, and that may be something that this council may have to discuss. Ms. Purville is there, I've been working with Ms. Purville, the noise ordinance, the noise levels need to be checked in her salon, the police department has to do it, I know that they have a lot going on, they have a lot going on, so I will follow the commissioner on that, to make sure that that facility, the gun range, is properly insulated, so that she will not be hearing it. I went into that salon myself, and I heard it, and it was terrifying to me, like, I'm not somebody that's used to hearing guns, and it was loud, and it was terrifying to me. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed there, and hopefully we can help her find a place where she can relocate, so she can continue to be a successful business owner in this community. I thank you all for coming, that's all, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ritter?
Thank you, Madam President, I'm really gonna try to be quick. First of all, I'd say thank you, Mr. Kane, for coming out. I went to a historically black college, and I did a lot of work to really do research on what this country was made up of, and that should say enough to you, so I'm not gonna speak about Columbus, but he was lost, clearly. Mrs. Reed, Commissioner Reed, thank you extensively. I think your research is dead on, and I just wish you would continue it. I'm working on the budget, and I'm going to see what I can do for your department specifically. No question about that. But as you know, we have financial constraints. So, and your points about the controller are extremely well taken. I trust that I read them and understand them completely. The question as to what we do, the next step that we actually take, is a difficult one. And I think we've all discussed how expensive these lawsuits can be. And I find that these lawsuits are more effective if it's done at the right time. So there may be a little bit of pause and delay from this council, but it may be strategic why we pause. Which brings me out to skip over and go right to the residency requirement. I'm going to try to get right to Brenda L. Crump's questions, but I'm not sure exactly when the next court date is. But I will tell you that we did reply to the Corporation Council's affidavit, if you will, or his answer to the courts. I personally won't answer that at this council since I was the council president at the time that the court started the process. And so we did have a response to that, that this council has not reviewed yet. So this council needs to review that, and we need to talk about it. I will say that that court case, as you know, because you attended a lot of the meetings, was extremely long-winded. They completely, I feel, the courts completely denied this city of its right to have our hearing in court so that we can come to a conclusion on that. So I don't know when the next court date is because we are appealing in Brooklyn at that case. I'll try to get a more defined update for you. So I think we're good there. Mrs. Ned, thank you for coming out. In a way, I was kind of waiting for somebody to complain on Hancock. So I know you have a lot of neighbors that are on the even side of the street that are seeing the same thing that you're seeing. So I know you have the Romans, the Pages, and the Mities that are right there, right next to you. I think you should reach out to them and really sit and think about what the next steps you need to take. I happen to know the owner of that lot. I would like to ring one of your doorbells and come and take a look, and then get a better feel for what you're seeing, and then see if we could come to a resolution. But as you know, that field was vacant for, I think, forever. I can't remember anything on that field. And I went to 444 Anasor School right across the street. I mean, I can't remember anything ever going on there. So we do not know that that property owner wanted to do something with that land, but there may be a way to correct or at least mitigate what he's done to the good folks on Hancock. And as I was looking over this at Hancock, I realized I know a lot of folks on Hancock. It was probably because your street wasn't paved way back when, and you finally got that old days stuff. So let's talk during the break, let's talk briefly. Mrs. Purville, I know she's outside. Her issue is difficult for this council because we really don't really get involved with landlord tenant stuff, but they'd be hearing gunshots and so on. And I've been in her salon, don't ask why, but I've been in her salon. She didn't do my hair, but I've been in her salon. And she runs a great operation, and she makes extremely credible points when it comes to small business owners in our community and how this community especially should take care of small business owners like Mrs. Purville. Ten years to run a salon is not an easy feat. So I applaud her for her work, and she has a very credible point. And I must say this. All of those vacant buildings that are out there are doing nothing, are doing no good for the homeowners that pay taxes here. Because if there's nobody occupying a storefront, and the storefronts just stay vacant for years, that means that they get to agree their taxes, and they get to pay less taxes. So it's good to have small businesses in these buildings so that the building owner can pay taxes. If there's no business in the building, that building pays lower taxes, which means all those taxes are pushed over to the homeowner. So Mrs. Purville has an excellent point. We need to be able to open up some of these storefronts to these small businesses so that they can generate more tax income for all of us. She had some wonderful points. So I'll be working with her a little bit more. Jesse Van Lu, thank you, sir. Good to see you again. Keep doing what you're doing, and what you're doing is informing the community, and that's what we need. There's only five of us, and it's hard to deliver all the information that we hand out to people. So when people come here and make a point of explaining it to people correctly, it's a big help to us. So thank you, sir, for what you do. Mrs. Allen, how you doing? Thank you very much. Shaw, Mrs. Day, Dr. Day, thank you for coming out as well. We appreciate you. I would like to learn more about the WBAI that you spoke of. So I'm not familiar with that, I don't think. So I'd like to talk to you just briefly so that I can find that as a companion. Mr. Keller, how are you, sir? I will, yes, Mr. Keller, I will say to you that when Maureen was here, she was very concerned about what was going on down in the water department. She was not able to do as much as she wanted to, and she was very offended that the water department did not transfer their excess funds over to the general fund. She did tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. I worked with her on that. And a lot of things that are going on now are because of what Maureen worked on years ago when she was still here in office. So we didn't talk about it then because we're still in its infancy stage. It's become very apparent what we kind of knew back then. And again, I'll say, being a council person is hard, revealing stuff or exposing stuff until we have proof and other people see it like we do. I'm sure if I did it with reading the residency requirement, today, we would get much more traction than we did two or three years ago. Mr. Bird, I don't think he's still here. I'm not sure exactly what's going on there. Maybe we'll try to reach out to them. Mrs. Crump, another question that you had was about the water bill status. I will say this. This is Mount Vernon, New York. This is not Alabama. In Alabama, if you don't pay your water bill, they come out, they turn off your water. It's as serious as that. We don't do that here in Mount Vernon. I'm not saying don't pay your water bill. I agree with the other elected officials. I think my approach would be for residents to pay their water bill and then to expect some type of credit when all this gets resolved. And I doubt that they're going to write you a check. You'll probably afford credit that you will have on your bill. That's what I recommend. But I will tell you, this city is not in the business of turning off anyone's water. I'd like to thank Councilman Edwards for coming out. I know he came out speaking on behalf of the veterans. He brought up some other things that have not been resolved over the years. I think Councilman Edwards and Councilwoman Puzo would be surprised that some of the things that we're still dealing with today, that I was dealing with when I first returned to the council, the same things kind of just rotate around in this city. And it's painful to have to do that. But I would love it to get to a point where we can resolve some stuff. Mr. Singleton, I know he stepped out. Highly decorated military man that lives in our community, well-respected. I know we honored him at the Memorial Day Parade one year. So we have wonderful veterans that have served in this community that all of us should be very proud of. So I know I was not able to make it out to the Veterans Day Ceremony, but that does not replenish my respect, my high respect for our veterans. And I love it when they wear the hats that show where they served or what ships they might have served on because it gives me pause to do my research as to what that ship was, or where they were located, or what that war was. They served and, you know, often, often, we don't know the sacrifices that they've made for us. And the stories that these gentlemen, mostly gentlemen here, and even Commissioner Reed must have for us is probably a lesson for us to really pay deep attention to, especially for us non-military folks who just live by them. And I think finally, Stefan Ritter, thank you so much for continuing to come out to the community. I hope that was quick enough, Council President. Usually I go a long-winded, I'm done. Thank you, God bless you all.
No problem. So I'll be the quickest. Mr. Keller, the public hearing has not been set. We've been trying to get together, myself, the mayor, and the controller. That has been difficult based on all the other things that are happening. So I'm hoping that will happen soon, and by the first week of December, we can have a public hearing on that. That's my hope, but I tend to be hopeful. With regards to the spectrum and horizon, if you shall recall, several months ago, the Cable Advisory Committee had asked to have an audit done. And that has been the holdup in terms of contract negotiations because the audit has not been done of the franchise fees. So I want to say that for the record, that's where it has halted. Because it's never started. Audit of the franchise fees. Because the companies have had difficulty getting the information that they need to do the audit. With regard to Director Reed, certainly, before I was president, I was the chair of that committee, and I've supported her since she's come on board. I've spoken to the controller several times. I have, in the past, for those of you who don't know, since we've been recorded, the Veterans Department and Civil Defense Department shared space. So they shared staff. But the Civil Defense Department, since they go out on fires with the fire department, relocated to the fire department. That's why Director Reed is in the office without any help. And I can't remember, I think it was earlier this year, she had requested for a person, a clerk or secretary. If I'm, that was this year. It's been a long year, yes. So we have to add, that's one thing that Councilman, I don't think it's negotiable because of what the Veterans Commissioner has to do in terms of going out and serving veterans. She needs somebody there to take the messages. Having a machine is not helpful. I'm offended still that I call City Hall and I do a voice ban. I'm offended. I used to work here, I used to pick up every single call. So I'm offended that there's voice lines. I can understand it for after-hours, but not during the day. But I digress. That's just my little two cents on that. The veterans, certainly, we appreciate all they do. And the Veterans Department, it didn't just start. It always has, Councilman Edwards alluded to it, but it really has always been like the last, you know, overlooked in so many ways, despite all that the prior Veterans Commissioners have done. And certainly, Director Reed has taken it to a level. And we appreciate you and all that you do. I see it because the veterans, they stop me. And Brenda L. Crump, I think the charter is clear on the residency. I don't know why we're even still in court with it. The charter is clear. The only person who has the opportunity to move to, that has six months to move, is the Police Commissioner. Everybody else is supposed to be a resident. I don't even understand why we're still in court with it. It's black and white to me, but I'm not a judge or lawyer, even though I like that very much. Certainly, I want to thank Mr. King, Mr. Monroe, and Dr. Day for coming. I think that this community, we should do a recognition day because we have something like, last count, I think it's 90 states, different nationalities. And this is a community that, we talk about a melting pot. They talk about Queens, but I think we even have more nationalities than them. So I don't think it takes away from the other. In terms of eliminating Columbus Day, since it's a state, it's a federal holiday. I don't know if we can do that locally. The resolution would be binding because the holidays come down from the state, which come from the federal government. But in terms of a recognition day for Indigenous Day, I think we can, we can do that. And that's it, that I have to say. Because enough has been said, and it's almost set clock, and we have 25 boxes on our agenda. So we're going to take a short, five-minute break, and then when we come back, we'll throw this in our agenda. Thank you for coming, and Happy Thanksgiving, we have to leave. Or Happy Family Day, as we call it, around the COVID lockdowns.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number 42 is for information. Item number 44 is on the agenda. I had several add-ons. The first add-on is called for. Second add-on, I believe clerk, is this the legislation that is called for? Because there was a question as to...
From the Deputy Director? Deputy Director, that's the one that Ms. Lordop has shown by? Deputy Director of Youth Bureau.
And that was, so it's not, that's not from Deputy Director, it's from the Deputy Director. So I'm sure it matches, just a second. We have information from here. So on the agenda, the only thing I see from the Youth Bureau is the...
Number eight, exactly.
Oh, this was something. Number seven is an ordinance regarding, so that is, that is on the agenda. That is my add-on number three. That's on the agenda. Add-on number two, I think, is the one that the Law Department asked to hold because we were still clarifying some of the numbers. Is that right?
Yes, and the one for the conference, the Youth Bureau?
Sure, Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry about that, yes. The one for the conference, the Youth Bureau, that should be on also, that should be made.
Yes, that's on. Okay, so I think that that is, so my first add-on is called for. My second add-on, I had originally asked to come agenda, but that's called for. Then we need some clarification. And my add-on number three is on the agenda. Else have a resolution on the agenda. And I'll leave that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutter. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam President.
Public speaking.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number three is called for. Item number seven, nine, and 10 are for information. Item number 11 is called for. Item 12 is for information. Item 16, 17, 18 are called for. Item 21 is on the agenda. 22 is on the agenda, and 23 is on the agenda. Item 25 is for information. Item 29 is on the agenda. Oh, yeah, that's, sorry, that one was taken off. Item 29 is transferred to Friday as a planning of the law. Item 37 is, I'm holding. Item 38, and 39, and 40 are on the agenda. Item number 45 is called for. Item 46 is for information. Item 47 is for information. 48 is on the agenda. 50 is for information. 52 and 58 are for information. 61 and 62 are held, and I have two add-ons that are called for. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman, the Lordop is trying to reach you with reference to the the add-on and reference to the posting of the signs. And there was a concern that the Lordop had. We could not reach you, we tried...
Who tried to reach me?
I did. I called her twice. I have messengers on the phone.
Okay.
And I was in the office with her late, and we was unable to get you. And she was not able to prepare that because of a question, concern that is when we post signs, there's an insurance process that comes with it. She wanted to know who was the person that was going to be posting the insurance, whether it's going to be the organization, whether it's going to have a... We didn't know that. And so we couldn't, she could not read the legislation.
For the signs.
Excuse me?
Yes, yeah, you said for the signs. The attempt was made to reach you. Thank you, Clerk Purville.
Thank you. Financing planning?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 124 being called for. Items 5, items 5, 14, and 15 are for information. Item 19 was enacted. Items 24, 26, 30...
Items twenty-four, twenty-six, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven are all for information.
It's not fifty-four. It's the second day.
It is not fifty-four, it's fifty-one, fifty-five, fifty-six.
I thought you said fifty-five. But what number did you say?
I'll say it again. Thirty-six, forty-three, fifty-one, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven are all for information. I have an add-on, which is the T-Mobile Non-Lawson, which is enumerated as twenty-one. I have an add-on, which is the Taxes Removal, enumerated as number twenty. I have an add-on, which is the Accounting for County Person's Time, as well as the Correction to the legislation from two thousand and ten, enumerated as twenty-two and twenty-three. I have the Honoree for Jen Lockard, enumerated as twenty-four. I have the Honoree for Roberta Puzo as an add-on, enumerated as twenty-five. Transferred from another committee is item thirty-seven, which is the Mayor's Pedestrian Study, which I am calling for. I'd like to come back at the next meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. When we get to number twenty-one, there needs to be your correction on it. It says five ninety East Third Avenue, should be East Third Street, I'm sure. I think it's five nine, I'm pretty sure it's five ninety East Third Street on the actual legislation.
Yes, thank you.
All right, roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
President.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Here, here.
Councilman Griffith.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
President. Legislation matter of the course?
I have an ordinance, an ordinance approving the designation of Yac- Yacenia.
What?
Yacenia. Yacenia, which is to process married license in the City Court's Office of law.
Second. Want a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman, Councilman, Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have an ordinance granting permission to the City Court's Secretary to attend the training solo.
Second. Want a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have an ordinance granting permission to the City Court's Secretary to attend the training solo.
Second. Want a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have a resolution honoring Deborah Walker solo.
Second. Want a question? We'd like to, oh, want a question? Let me use the... Want a question?
On the question.
How we'd like to thank Deborah Walker for her thirty-eight years of service in the city of Mount Vernon. And she just snuck right out the door and rolled off. Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have a resolution honoring my agent, Cyrus Cope, solo.
Second. Want a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have a local law amending chapter twenty-four, twenty-four Ethics, Article One, Code of Ethics, Section twenty-seven dash seven F of the Mount Vernon City Charter entitled Board of Ethics, solo.
Second. Want a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
I'm staying.
Okay, reason?
Um, I don't object to it per se, I'm just, I don't see why we are delegating this subpoena authority to a board when we have not demonstrated its success with the council.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Council, I'm, okay, I'm local. Councilman, Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
I'm a nay on that because I think it's overreach by the Board of Ethics. Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to adjourn to the present, with the Westchester Government Workforce Development Board for twenty eighteen T A M program.
Second. Want a question?
If I may, Madam President. Last time I, I, I saw that there were two different requests. One was twenty eighteen, I thought one was twenty nineteen, correct? And so...
Were you, you were talking here or you asking the chair?
Well, I'm putting it out of the atmosphere. And I just wondered, can you just give me a little bit more clarity? I mean, trying to go through that, I just want to add a little bit more clarity as to why it's being done now and not before the, 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 why is it, why is it done at this time?
Got it. Um, I believe that this letter is referred to from the one dated November ninth. And this, it was for the period of June first, two thousand and eighteen through September three, two thousand and eighteen. And with some of these, we have to demonstrate we extended it to the month before, so it's my, 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 my...
So, so is that what you're saying? You're saying that it's a reimbursement grant and so it's after the program is complete that we submit the documentation, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call on number seven. Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have an ordinance granting permission to the Executive Director and two staff members of the U Bureau to attend the conference from November thirteenth, fifteenth, seventeenth.
Second. Want a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman, sorry, Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Council President Cope.
Aye.
I have an ordinance requesting deferment of aid to localities funding to deferred revenue code to be reallocated and used for the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, so moved.
Second. Want a question?
I'm trying, Megan.
Sure, sure.
I just, I just want to make a note, it's not in the title. This is regarding the Veterans Service Agency, the aid to localities in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-nine is the New York State Grant Money that we receive annually and the request is to defer the amount that we received this year to the two thousand and nineteen budget.
Madam President. Council.
I would just like to know why. Why is the money deferred?
Because the Veterans Agency operating budget is a little over five thousand dollars.
Is what?
Is five thousand two hundred dollars. This amount of eight thousand five hundred and twenty-nine, it would supplement that operating budget that she needs on an annual basis. The, this amount, she does not need to extend this year, so she first wants to defer it to the following year, it's a practice that has taken place, I think, over the last few years. Where she defers the, the, the annual, the annual gift of the eight thousand five hundred and twenty-nine to the following fiscal year to supplement the operating.
So you're saying this, this is not the first time she's done it?
Correct.
I have a question also, Councilwoman. I want to be sure of that. With this, with this particular, with this particular grant, sometimes you get a grant, it has to be extended within that same year that the grant is given. Is this one of those grants and we research that to make sure that it has to be drawn down in the year that it was done? Or can it be deferred? Because sometimes grants, like I said, have to be done for that year. Do you check that out just to be sure?
Sorry, I don't have, if I may, Madam President. Sure, I'm, I'm, Council. I don't have specific details to say exactly, but my understanding is that, yes, it can be deferred and it has been done so in the past. There was a period of a few years when either the director's office was not, was not filled and therefore the annual grant that was coming in was never drawn down. The paperwork wasn't signed to, to receive, to allocate it and it wasn't drawn down.